Call this meeting to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska governing body. The city of Seward provides what the Nebraska law means act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska law means act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is posted in the meeting room. A participant's signing sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Presenter shall approach the podium, state their name and address for the clerk's record, enter as the limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor by who shall determine by whom. Any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary, and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Wilkin.
Present.
Beck.
Camper.
Here.
Fritz.
Miller.
Here.
Singleton.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Enz.
Alright, the first item this evening is consideration of approval of draft minutes of February seventh, twenty seventeen. Do we have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Next item is the consent agenda.
Salute.
Do we have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Next item is confirmation of mayor's appointments. This is, uh, the appointment of three appointments of Randy Chap, Ray Johnson, and Sandy Wright to the Park and Recreation Board for a three-year term. Do we have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Our first public hearing this evening is a presentation discussion of functioning and progress of the Seward Economic Development Plan. This is the Citizen Advisory Review Committee. I believe Greg Walls, welcome.
I'm Greg Walls, seven twenty-six Beta Avenue. I'm a member of the Citizen Advisory Review Committee. We met on January eighteenth.
Are there any questions for Greg? This is a public hearing, so go ahead and open up, uh, the public comment. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing no one, then I'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of this hearing. Are there any other questions or comments from the council? I believe we just take a motion to accept the report. Do we have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Thank you, Greg. Uh, the next public hearing is consideration of an ordinance vacating alley between Lincoln Street and Cedar Street and between Fourth and Fifth Streets. I believe, uh, John Hughes, do you want to take this one?
I had a question by Mr. Gary Rolfe to consider vacating the alley between, uh, fifth streets and fourth streets down to, uh, lots. Oh, seven thirty-five and seven forty-eight Fifth Street. It doesn't go all the way down to the edge. The reason for his request was, Mr. Rolfe has got an existing garage, so he sits pretty much on the alley property line. And, uh, he wanted to rebuild his garage. If he rebuilds that garage, he has to provide a five-foot setback. So that moves it over into property he didn't really want it. So he thought if he vacated the alley, then he could use the seven feet portion could, so fourteen-foot alley is split in half, it'd make it seven feet. He would use that seven feet for his setback. Talking with, uh, our Utilities Department, both the Water, Waste of Water, and Electric Department. Electric Department expressed, uh, quite a bit of concern of getting ready to do some rebuilding in that, that area. And at the moment, uh, there really is no other good way of getting down there to carry telephone poles to redo the electric lines other than going down an undeveloped alley. And even at that, people have gardens there, they have some fences and sheds and stuff. I'll have Larry get up and talk a little bit as well, but for these, and, and the water and sewer, there is a sewer line down there. If we were to vacate the alley, I would say that we would do it with the maintenance of the fourteen-foot alley as an easement. However, this, uh, the building department's recommending not to vacate it.
The commission? Who, who's right?
Plant commission?
Yeah.
No.
Was that unanimous?
They were unanimous.
Is there any questions for John? Otherwise, I'll have Larry when he wants to come up and add something. Go to, uh, hang on one second. Do you want us to ask questions?
No, I just have a question. John, if you would like leave it unobstructed, you know, where people could like plant grass and stuff?
They have it there.
Would that be possible?
Yeah, it's, it's grassed down, and people are using it.
It already is.
It's an undeveloped alley, it's all grassed down.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Larry, did you want to add something?
That's our only access to that alley. You can't get between houses and the garage, there's not enough room for equipment. And the telephone company cable thing would also need access. And that's the only, from that south, and we got south end of that alley north is the only way you can get in there.
Larry, we got poles running down that alley, right?
Yes, we got poles. Three-phase line, we're going to place the poles, the wire, arms, transforms all going to be changed out. And we're in the process, we're starting the west part of town and moving east, and that's when it's going to be coming up.
But was the purpose for wanting to vacate it, was it desired to re, to move a garage or build a garage?
To build a garage for our city right now.
Okay, so there would be a structure along that, which currently they would rebuild.
There is a structure there right now.
Yeah, right.
Even for ill and all assets, what it'll probably end up doing is keeping one mall and building.
Right, okay. Did you have something else to add? Did you have anything else to add? Any other questions for John or, or Larry? Otherwise, I'll go ahead, this is a public hearing, uh, so I'll go ahead and open up the public comment portion of this item. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on item number nine? Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Does the council have any other questions or comments? So, I guess at this point, you're gonna do, you're gonna take a motion to vacate, or we could also do, Kelly would read a motion to not vacate? Either way, or if it's just not a motion to vacate, it would just fail for lack of a motion?
Yeah, I would just consider the ordinance and, like, any other ordinance.
Okay. So we'll just start with, then, unless there's any questions or comments, then we'll go ahead, um. Would someone like to first introduce the ordinance? We'll start there. I'll read the ordinance then by title. In ord- in ordinance providing for the closing and vacating of the remaining portion of the north-south alleyway located between Fourth Street and Fifth Street and Lincoln Street, beginning at the southwest property line of Lot Nine, Kroger's Reed Platte of Woods subdivision, and the southeast property line of Tax Lot One Sixty-Five, continuing north approximately five hundred ten feet to the northwest property line of Lot Three of Kroger's Reed Platte of Woods subdivision, and the northeast property line of Tax Lot Two Seventy-Two. The same being a partially established and flatted alley within the city to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form. The ti- the ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number twenty seventeen dash zero two, and the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with statutory rule. Do we have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion?
Just a que- a question. Larry?
Yes?
So like, I live up on North Avenue. We had, we had an abandoned alley years ago, you know, that built in nineteen forty-eight. The utilities are kind of in the middle, and then each of our properties got, you know, half of that. But there is access on the north of the fence line, you know, the whole way? So I've seen that there are these little, and I, I think we have one, do we have one of those forty-eight inch?
Yes, we do.
Pole-type things that you can get in there?
Yeah.
And you can br- you can bring a pole, you can dig a hole, you can, you can actually work on stuff?
Yeah.
So we do have that capability?
Yes.
Would that work if we close this?
Even that would be tough to get in, in some of them locations. It's just that close in there, there's, there's, uh, garages and houses close, there's gardens, there's playground equipment, there's chain link fences. Right now, it's, we can't access that from the south without moving too much, maybe a fence or two, a garden or two.
So you still would have to move stuff right now?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Trainers or several things, but we can get in from the south.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion? And this, just to remind you, this is to dispense with the statutory rule. If there's no further discussion, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
In favor, Wilkin, Camperit, Miller, Schmidt, hands opposed, Singleton.
And this, this is ordinance number twenty seventeen dash zero two. Would anyone like to move that this? Oh, we didn't? Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. So that's the first reading then, Kelly?
That's right.
Okay, sorry, John, I didn't see that board. Okay, so we'll just leave that as the first reading then, and then move on? Is that correct, Kelly?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll move on to item number ten. This is, uh, again, a public hearing, consideration of approving the preliminary and final plat of Rainbow Lake Edition west of Highway fifteen and Adams Road. And John, did you want to take that too?
Yeah, um, basically, this is a separation of the, of the residential part of the property. There's ninety-three acres out there, in order for her to get financing, they have to separate off the homestead away from the farm ground. And so we'll be taking five acres off of that. And I believe you had the, uh, the preliminary and final plat sent to you. A pretty simple deal. There's no utilities involved. The only thing is, there's a way of, of right-of-access easement to get to their property, to their field, in their field. But in the future, if they were to sell that land, they still have the right to.
Any questions from the council or comments for John? I'll go ahead and open up then the public hearing, the public comment portion of the public hearing for item number ten. Does anyone from the public wish to comment? Seeing no one, then I'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Um, are there any other questions from the council or comments on item number ten?
I will say there has to be three items that we have to amend the future land use map, and then we have to change the zoning, and then we have to approve the preliminary and final.
Okay, so the first item would be the consideration of amending the future land use map, Rainbow Lake Edition?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll take that one first, and I believe that's just a, a simple motion.
It's a rezone from agricultural to rural residential.
Then the following two would be ordinances?
Yes.
So move on, eh?
Do we have a mo- uh, motion to, to amend the future land use map, Rainbow Lake Edition? Is there a second?
Seeing.
Do we have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. The next item B is consideration of an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Seward and rezoning certain property within two miles adjacent to and beyond the corporate limits of the city of Seward from Ag Agricultural District to, uh, our, our rural residential district of Rainbow Lake Edition. Any other questions or comments?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Okay. Go ahead and read the ordinance by title. In ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Seward, Nebraska, to rezon certain property within the area of two miles adjacent to and beyond the corporate limits of the city of Seward, Nebraska, which is now zoned, Ag Agricultural District to our, our rural residential district, to describe the property rezoned to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form to provide for a time that this ordinance shall take effect. The i- ordinance has been read by title and the, is designated as ordinance number twenty seventeen dash zero three, and the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with statutory rules.
Seeing.
Do we have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Alright, then, uh, this is ordinance number twenty seventeen dash zero three. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read? Do we have a motion, is there a second? Do we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, the question is, your ordinance number twenty seventeen dash zero three be finally passed and adopted? Please register your vote. Please display the votes. I have s- I have ten to see, this is consideration of an ordinance approving preliminary and final plats on the Rainbow Lake Edition. Any further discussion on this item? Unless there's someone like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
In ordinance to approve the plat entitled Rainbow Lake Edition, Seward County, Nebraska, is here and after set forth, located at two eight three eight Adams Road, Seward County, Nebraska, to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number twenty seventeen dash zero four, and the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with the statutory rule.
Seeing.
Do we have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? Please register your votes. Please display the votes. Again, this is ordinance number twenty seventeen dash zero four. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
Seeing.
Do we have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? The question is, your ordinance number, based on. The question is, ordinance number twenty seventeen dash zero four be finally passed and adopted? Please register your vote. Please display the vote. Quiet? Alright. Do they record it when you do it, though?
Sure.
Alright. Next item. Eleven, also a public hearing, this is consideration of approval of preliminary plat for Ridge Run Fourth subdivision. John?
This is, uh, preliminary subdivision, paying twenty-five lots, uh, be to the north of the existing Ridge Runs. Uh, there'll be some additions of some roadways as well as utilities. Uh, if we drive Mr. Coleman here, he can also, uh, give some testimony to, to subdivision.
Are there any questions for, I'll give you one second. Is there any questions for John, though, first, or comments? Alright, come on up there.
Mr. Mayor Bill Coleman, twenty fifty-four Holridge Road, Pleasantale, Nebraska, six eight four two three. Um, I also have Eric Hillby with us tonight. And, um, we're asking for approval for Web Fourth Edition, uh, to add twenty-five lots to the north side of, um, the developments already approved. So I guess I would just, with that, ask if there was any questions for me.
Any questions or comments from the council? Yes, Jonathan?
How many accesses do you plan to have coming in and out of there?
There'll be the two accesses that we currently have.
Which is down off of?
There's one coming in on Garber and one coming in off East, well, they both come in off East Seward, but one was the old Garber, which is now Goldenrod. And then the one on, on, uh, East Seward down by Linder's Place.
But so from inside Ridge Run, the only access out from the twenty-five houses is Goldenrod?
No. It would be Goldenrod and down East Seward. I mean, down Ridge Run. Ridge Run enters off East Seward and so does Goldenrod. There's two entrances.
So from?
The closest one would be Goldenrod.
The roundabout, where the roundabout is, that is the only entrance down.
Oh, you mean from the island? Yes.
So the twenty-five houses will run all through that? Is that?
Do you have the plot?
I, the doctor, so I have a pretty good idea of what, yeah, and I thought there was supposed to be one down between Seavers and, uh, Dominance too.
Yeah, well, through the conversations that we've had with the city and the building department, that's a road that, I mean, both roads are exactly the same length. They both go to the exact same place. It's kind of silly to throw in another hundred and fifty feet of road that has no lots and really no, serves actually no purpose.
Except for the people that have to watch the fifty cars a day drive through along vacation. Or for, if like, emergency, I, do we have to be concerned about that?
John, can you pull it up on the, on the map so we can see what we're talking about here?
Well, I can't.
Okay.
John.
Well, let me see.
I can tell you that, um, both Greg Dammon and Seavers would, um, be very disappointed if the street went through right there. And I just, as Web Development sees no use for that, other than, I mean, because like I said, it, it's a small section of the street that is going to tear through two people's property that have been established for, well, even though there is an easement for that, um, for many years, you know, almost twenty years. And access is the same whether you go that way down Wildwood or out Goldenrod, it's the same. So basically, essentially, all you're doing is connecting two roads together with the exact same accesses. There's no.
But they have the access to go through Goldenrod or down Ridge Run?
They have the same access on Goldenrod to go to down, and out Goldenrod or down Ridge Run. A block apart is all it is. So both accesses are still available from exiting Goldenrod. There, it's essentially the same.
So, Bill?
Can I, can I step forth on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, uh.
Yeah, he had the la- the laser pointer pointing.
Let me see here, gotta get a little closer, 'cause I'm like Mayor Erickson here. So Goldenrod, I mean, you guys, we don't even have the other addition up there. Okay, so Goldenrod goes up, then we'll have a street going this way in the new addition. There's two cul-de-sacs here, one here and one here. So this cul-de-sac will have, I think it's four or five lots, and this one's four or five lots. So this exit, this access that you're talking about, right here, goes here, or you can go this way right down Ridge Run, or you can come out here and go right out Goldenrod onto East Seward Street. Okay, so what you're asking is, essentially, is to cut through two people's pieces of property to go here when we actually have the access here that's very, very close. And this really serves no perp, well, it's here, excuse me, it's here. This is, uh, Dammon's and Seavers, Dammon, Seavers. So if we were to cut through this right here, there is obviously two things. I mean, things that enter into Web Development's minds is cost of lots in Seward, Nebraska. To throw in an extra hundred and some odd feet or more of paving to increase the price of lots, this was one way for us to, you know, keep things down, because everything's going up. So that was one thought process going into it. The other one was, is that we've had, um, many times, Dammon and Seavers address the fact that they would like to not see that go through there. So, I mean, really, we didn't see a whole lot of need, being that, you know, we already have the accesses here. And then also, you know, when you come here, you have this access.
John?
Yes.
For emergency services, it isn't going to benefit by putting a road, because you're not going to gain anything putting a road to the west there. And by rights, when you look at it, you almost have three accesses to, and Sergeant can even tell me the same thing here, because you can go clearly east in and come out there. Um, we're clearly east in, where that gravel road hooks around and hooks to Thirty-four. You can come down Evergreen as well and almost go straight in that way, or come East Seward Street. So you're, you got multiple, you got three accesses to it. And it, it, actually, the quickest way to it would probably come down Evergreen and then hit Goldenrod and then go straight down into it.
See, and I'm not worried about outside of it, I'm worried about more inside of it. Considering that there's twenty-five houses in that area, if you look at the rest of them, their accesses are a lot better.
The, the main thing for emergency services is, is long as the roads in there are wide enough.
And they are sixty feet. City, we're, we're doing city, obviously, city.
When phase one came in, even though it was going to be private drive, we made a, 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 a dedicate, d- 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 dedicate a sixty-foot right away in the case of.
Your worst-case scenario is a structural fire where you had to bring ladder truck in, and that's where you want, biggest, as big as we can go in there for roads. Same way with snow removal, they want it as big as they can, so they don't hit all the mailboxes.
Are you considering?
You don't want that. Any future developments, uh, uh, any starts going east?
Mayor, we are, uh, in our minds down the line, we do not own currently that property, but that is in the back of our minds, and that is what we have set this development up for. In the, in the future, to both Ridge Run, which is, I'm getting pretty good with this. Ridge Run, which would exit here into what is Leeb's property currently. And then this, uh, road, which would be that's, that is going to come through here, which is, uh, Blue Stent, would also exit east and, you know, whatever, that certainly is off in the future.
John, if you, zoom out just a little bit more. There you go. A little bit, a little bit more, I wanted to see East Seward Street.
That gravel road that hooks, or the road that hooks around?
Yeah, so what's the plan, I guess, or I, I realize you don't own the property, but I assume you probably have some drawings or at least ideas of what you want to do in the future. Where would be like additional access points potentially? I realize it's not.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, we don't have any plans
Okay.
for this east subdivision.
Okay.
If it ever becomes one.
Okay.
Only for the simple fact that, um.
You want to do that one first?
Well, this needs to be completed, for one, because it, this whole thing was always going to be three-phased. It ended up being four, because we did an administrative replot of some lots on Ridge Run, um, two, three years ago. Three years ago, I believe, I can't remember if it was two or three, but, um, in the back of our minds, you know, we don't know, and we just don't know how this is going to be in the future. It is owned by somebody else that currently has no interest of selling it. But we, you know, you don't want to landlock yourself either. So that's why the development has, has, you know, we've talked about going this way, and we've talked about coming this way both.
So, Bill, have you talked to, you know, say, if the ones to the east don't want to sell, have you talked to anybody to the north about going out to the, Bill, perhaps?
You know, I, um, actually, um, I, I don't think I should really say. I can't tell you that there is conversation, and that's about as far as I'll leave it, okay? I mean, for personal reasons on the other side of things, I don't really want to, um, go. Oh, you're talking about north?
Yeah.
Oh, no, north, I, I thought you said north.
North.
I mean, south.
Not north.
You did say, I, I apologize. You cannot go north.
You, you're going to go north.
North is done. It goes into the old railway.
Yeah.
And, um, there's an air strip field back there, and then also it goes right into, um.
Floodway.
Yeah, and, um, who owns it?
Crude.
G, Tom G.
Tom G, yeah.
Yeah, Tom G owns that thirty, forty acres right there adjacent to it.
Yes, Sid?
Question for both Bill and John at the same time. So Bill, would you be looking for in this fourth edition the same exemptions to the city's standard street, sewer and utility rules that the other two, three phases have enjoyed?
Actually, um, that's exactly what we're asking for. Currently, we have three districts created. Um, one is sewer, one is water, and one is power. The association that would. The association that was established from phase one, and I would remind everybody in the council, if some people were here, I don't remember, not, maybe none of you were here twenty years ago when it first started.
I love.
Yeah, but anyway, initially, this, this development was approved in rock. A countryside type, you know, development, and it was all approved in gravel, rock.
But if you remember the discussion twenty years ago when I was here, because of the emergency accesses at that time is the reason why we went the other way.
Actually, it was a, it was a choice by web development to pave. Um, I don't mean to disrespect, I'm just saying it was a choice by web development to pave those streets. Not only for the simple fact that obviously that's a better scenario, but we felt it was a better selling point.
Good, noted. So basically, what, what I'm coming down to is on this fourth edition, you will be, you will be asking, not just assuming, the same exemption. And I would assume, John, this is for you, that since we're looking at a new development here, this is not one, two, three, this is four. The, the ordinance, or the, the codes, as far as the roads, sewers, streets, gutters, all that stuff, is all up for grabs again, correct? There's nothing in anything in writing prior to this that would just assume that, okay, this is just gonna, and my only concern is, Bill, is that when you're talking about like maybe buying, you know, the Leeb's and that other lady there and stuff, like, as a councilman, looking out for the standards of the city and complying to codes which everybody else has to abide by, I'm just a little bit concerned about that, okay, well, this is gonna be, you know, grassy ditches and no curbs, and, well, we may, we may go on another twenty acres here, you know, and then we're gonna have a whole part of the city that is not only maintained by the city, but is not even designed to city standards. Okay, so I'm, I'm just thinking of the big picture here, but, but bringing it down from the big picture to like right now for this piece, which is what we're talking about. Because if, if this parcel was not ever a part, and I was not here twenty years ago, I was only here for when you wanted to turn the big lots into little lots. That's my only history. I, I'm just, I'm looking at the bigger picture from the, the city standpoint of if we grant you this exemption, then why shouldn't we grant another developer exemption? You know, who wants to go like north of the cemetery or anywhere, you know? And then what, what is eventually gonna be the, the, the care and the governance of those areas? Yes, that was you, John.
There are no exemptions.
What?
There are no exemptions.
But were there originally, how did this happen if there were no exemptions?
Okay.
Because it was not built to city standards.
Oh, yeah, it, the roads may have not been built to city standards. However, we dedicated a state, city standard roadway in case we have to take over it.
And see, I don't know any of that.
Yeah, that's what I just got to tell you.
That's my question.
Yeah, and, and in addition to that, we do have subdivision agreement that, that goes with the final plat. Uh, the only other thing in the, in the consideration.
I would like to see that, by the way.
The only other thing that goes into consideration is the, the use of utilities. And when we file the final plat, there will be a, a request for annexation of that, so we'll bring utilities out to it. From the very beginning, I was not comfortable, sorry. I was not comfortable with the idea of gravel rock out there to begin with. And so that's why at the very onset, we required, our typical roads go anywhere from a right-of-way of sixty to sixty-six feet wide, and we have sixty feet out there. We have an established ditch to, to carry the water runoff, just like if we were done to it for a sanitary sewer district, not sanitary storm sewer district. And, but there are no exemptions. It's just like everybody else, there's no specialty for Bill Web, uh, Bill or Eric or Webb.
See, then I was, I was, I'm confused because back in the day when I first got on the council, and I think the first, I don't know if it was the, the next amendment to the third edition came. But I was under the impression that there was some exemptions given, because, well, I remember your former boss.
Mr. Ryder.
No.
Oh.
Yeah. Had a big heartburn about the fact that there was not thirty-two foot streets out here with curbs and gutters and sewer from him. And when I asked him why that was the case, he said, well, there was an exemption given.
No, 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 there's no exemption, other than the fact that we didn't make them pave the road to city standards, because they're just private drives. And we also don't maintain the snow out there, we don't do any work out there.
Well, no, I, I understand all that, but it's just, anyway, my, my two concerns is that we don't just, you say we didn't grant an exemption, which I would like to see the minutes on that. And I'm, I don't wanna see that we, if that is not what happened, we don't just continue to do that, like what if, you know, Augusta, what's his name out there?
Dancy.
Yeah, if he just said, well, I wanna build another, another development, but I wanna do blacktop, and I don't want curbs or gutters, whatever, so if there's no exemption given, like, where can that stop, right?
Well, it starts with you, because every plat that goes through here gets a, put in front of you. And, and just like when we put the first, first phase of web, we said, you know, we have the dedicated roads, they're just sixty-foot right-aways if we have to go back in and turn them on, so that's.
Great, so my other question was, is East Seward Street, you know, I fought just to get armor coating on there.
Yes, sir.
Which has obviously been torn up already. So what is, what is the plan if we allow this, and we're allowing fifty more houses here?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, well, fifty cars, that's what I was thinking, fifty cars, twenty-five houses or more cars. To improve East Seward to there. It's not a question, it's just a concern. But then my other, my other question was right now, I just had some time the other day. I looked on, on the, uh, the GIS, John, of that area. And so the road that basically ends at Bob and Gay Marters to, to the original developments is owned by the association, at least on the county GIS. Goldenrod and everything out to like where you are is labeled as zero. What does that zero mean?
Okay, if you look on this plat, and I'll show it to you right here, actually, I can read it to you. There's strips, there are strips of ground shown on this plat and marked easement, reserved for the use of public utilities, is subject to impairment, right, in the city, to repair or replace, maintain this installations. All streets shown are not hereby, are not hereby dedicated, are hereby dedicated to the public unless specifically, specifically in the interim. So we own those streets, however, it's a private drive.
My question is, why then? You're the G, you're the GIS guy.
Yes.
So this is for you. Why, within the first two phases, a Ridge Run, does the association own? Because they're charged with maintaining them. The city doesn't maintain them, the city doesn't plow them, the city doesn't fix them.
Yeah.
Why would the first two phases of this development, they would own the streets, and the city just goes like this, and then this part of it, which the, the property owners own, all the property? Right, Bill? There's no more lots there, right?
No.
Right, so all the citizens that bought lots in three, or two and three, I guess you'd call it, or three and four?
Three.
Two and three, or just three. So why would not the, the, the streets be owned by the association? Where, I'm just, I'm just asking in the, like, the legal paperwork, what's the difference? Because the, the first two editions own the streets and this third one doesn't, why?
No, no, they should all be the same. Every single one of these plaques will show the dedication of the roadways to the city.
No, the city doesn't maintain them.
No, we don't.
So we shouldn't own them.
It's a private drive.
Right, so we shouldn't own them, the association should own them. So I think what should happen is the city or web development should grant those right-of-ways over to the association, because if we're not, if we're not plowing them or maintaining them, they're not ours, John.
Okay.
They're not our responsibility, because this whole development was based on wanting to have a private development, you know, where you could have your own thing going on, which I, I love, you know? I'm thinking about buying a lot on the new addition, by the way, anyway. So I'm all, I'm all in favor of that, but I'm just, I'm confused by the discrepancy here between the roadways in the first edition, first and second or whatever it was, and the, and the third edition, second, third, third and fourth. Why, I think, I think the association should own all the roads in that.
The association, the, the covenants and the bylaws and the association, yeah, they do own all of it. They do manage it, they do maintain it, it is their responsibility as, that's the way, that's the way the covenants are written, that's the way they're filed, and that's the way the association bylaws are also written.
So it should show up that way on the GIS and at the association's office.
It may be flows on the GIS map, but, but there, this is done just like the other two.
Right, but the only, the only concern I have is like out on our road, two-hundred-and-eighty-fifth, which was contested years ago, it's listed as a zero. Birch is a zero.
City property.
Highway fifteen is a zero. I mean, all public roads are a zero.
Hmm, and real roads.
Right, so it's really, I just found it odd when I was looking the other day at, at this, the Ridge Run development, that up to that certain point, that these are all zero. And the reason I, the only reason I'm concerned is because I think that those roads should be somehow documented as being owned by the association.
Well, they are, they are in the covenants and they are on the plat, but what's on the GIS? I mean, I got wrong addresses on the GIS.
So, so the, the point, I guess, then, Bill, I'm getting to you at is, when you guys were, were, were doing all your development stuff and all your paperwork, did you at some point grant, because in my opinion, and I'm not a developer, obviously, but if you would've developed that thing from the back to the front, it would've made, it, it, it appears to me that you kinda painted yourself into a corner, because you don't own anything now except the back corner. And so my question is, in all your paperwork and the agreements you wrote up, did you ever write into all that access to that back corner? Because if you own nothing anymore except that section of land, then you have to actually deal with them first, not with us. Because you don't own, own any of it anymore.
And that's, and that's the way it was put forth, that's the way, that's the way it's been designed, that the association could maintain that.
Right, so my, so my, my issue with tonight approving anything is that.
And that's exactly the way we still want it. We want it so that the association has the, but here's the thing, I mean, the, when we first designed this whole thing, and we brought it in front of the very first planning commission, it was a vision for Seward. And that vision was approved unanimously, and it was approved all the way through. At this point, to change course, I don't even know how you would do that. Because you, you know, if you, if you tried to change roads to sewer, first of all, our storm sewer is all collected by a pond. That doesn't even go into Seward at all, it's all collected by that pond. And it was initially designed that whole way, so everything goes to that pond. And that's, that's, no, no other, no other runoff goes there except for what maybe comes down the street, which everything from the crown of the street's supposed to go into the road ditches. But it was always our intent from day one to have this development go all the way through this way and the association to be in control of those streets, and that's the way it's written. And it's written that way by Greg Damon, which is also a, a member up there of that association. But, um, I guess, I can't speak to how it's written here and what your, your quarrels are with the way it's written here. I can only go by way, what we've done, and those are all filed, by the way. Not, I mean, the first one doesn't change from the second one. The covenants, they changed in two brief ways. And, and one of them, I, um.
Splitting the lots.
Yeah, we, we, we got into a situation in another part of town and another development that we were doing where a person bought lots and split them into two separate lots. And so we, when we were in phase one of that, we didn't want that to ever happen again, so we, we made amendment to the covenants up there. And that, and, and nothing else has changed. Everything was intended to go forth, the size of the homes, the amount of trees, the way the, um, you know, we have, we, you have to have a concrete approach off the asphalt coming into your property that goes across with the covert pipe, because those road ditches are designed for storm. And they're engineered that way, those, those road ditches. So, um, that's the way we're just, you know, and, and remember, these are not standard city lots. We're talking two-point-two, one-point-four, one acres, three acres, seven-eighths of an acre. These are big lots, these are, it was a vision.
And the, and the question I had is in, in the, the third edition, whatever it was, you know, cause I, I was on the council when you came before us, I wanted to like, split that, those east ones, the northeast ones into smaller ones. And I'm like, okay, well, that's no different than, you know, by the middle school or.
That's incorrect.
Wherever.
That's incorrect.
Just from my perspective, that's all I'm saying.
Those lots are not only deeper but wider than anything else in town.
But compared to what the original vision was, they're, they're a lot smaller.
I would agree that they are smaller than the original vision.
Just my perspective.
Can I address this?
Of course.
Eric Kelge, ten forty-eight North First Street, Seward, Nebraska. Uh, Sid, back during the oh-nine, ten, we're going through, you wanna call it a recession, I called it a depression, cause it lasted more than eighteen months, but we found ourselves in dire straits for finance. Um, and we had no way, we weren't selling lots at that time, so we split those lots apart. Those lots that you see split, they're on that north side, they're, they're roughly, excuse me, about a hundred and twelve feet street footage, and they're three hundred feet long depth-wise. So that's the length of a football field. Most of the lots that are up by the elementary school are.
Hundred and twenty, seventy-two by hundred and twenty.
Seventy-two on the street side, a hundred, so the whole scheme of this idea was to have more space, more country. And we even asked the city to cut back on the number of street lamps they put out there at that time too, so it'd be more darkened versus the standard hundred-and-twenty-five opposite sides of the street going down on that aspect of it. You gotta also remember too, that when this first went in, Seward was a gravel street, as you well know. And we went ahead and paved that, and looking back and working with John, we probably should've worked something out at that time, cause that created a lot of hardships. Because we now had a nice neighborhood that had pavement that you were dropping down from the gravel, uh, and then to go forth that way.
I think that's on the ten-year plan, isn't it, East Seward Street?
Oh, it's always on the.
It's on, it's on the one oh six.
It's on the one oh six?
One oh six.
Anyway, to reiterate, I guess, what Rick's saying is that, you know, we went through some pretty tough times there, and we were finding people that were wanting to build up there, but they weren't wanting the amount of property. So instead of turning those people away, we decided to add three lots, is what we did to that.
Yeah, and I, and I understand that, cause I, I mean, my lot is like only a hundred and twenty feet deep. It's not that wide, but, um, I'm just, as this goes forward, you know, as a, as a councilman, I'm not only wanting to look out for the, this, the tenants you have, or the, the owners you have out there, but just so we don't have something that, that gets out of our control a bit, you know? And not that it's all about control, but any, um, and I, and I, you know, when you said, you know, oh, well, we could keep going, well, you know, we develop a whole fourth of the town of Seward that doesn't comply with, and is not served by the, the city's plows and stuff, you know? And it, and it's, it's a good idea to start with, but my understanding is, and I've only had some limited discussion with the homeowners, but up to the point where the lots get sold, then it gets handed over to the homeowner association as far as the plowing, the maintenance, all that stuff, road maintenance. So basically, the homeowners at that point have that responsibility. So, basically, the homeowners at that point have that responsibility.
And that's the way it's been since day one.
Right, and so, I understand that from the, when you buy it, it sounds awesome, you know, like, oh, this car is yours, it's new, it's all shiny, you know? Well, then all of a sudden it gets rusty and something breaks. And so, anyway, just from a, from a council standpoint, I'm, I'm just a little, I'm just a little concerned about how far we let this go to the point where we have areas in town where at the beginning sound awesome and they look great, and, you know, they were great ideas, but then over time, you know, maybe people can't afford to pay their, their dues, and then, and by that time, you're out of it. I mean, you like, you, you got the land, you sold it, and, you know, it's not your problem anymore.
Mr. Camper.
It's the association's problem. That's my only concern.
Can I call you Sid, or should I call you Mr. Camper?
You've called me worse.
No, no, I would just like to say that, you know, um, this is all very clear, and this is not the only association in the state of Nebraska and, and surrounding states or in any state in the Union. There's associations developed all the time, and I mean no disrespect when I say this, but I feel that the association can manage their streets far better than the city would manage their streets if something goes wrong with them. You know, I've seen how sometimes the rhetoric and the bureaucracy that happens in the city of Seward and surrounding cities, now the roads are not taken care of in a timely fashion, or we're having problems trying to get paving for East Seward Street. Where these people have, in the end, they're gonna have, when this development goes through, sixty-nine lots pulling down four hundred dollars a year. Or, there's a few lots on East Seward Street that are only pulling down three hundred, well, that's almost twenty-eight thousand dollars a year. And that streets, those streets, to maintain those streets, if you're pulling down twenty-eight thousand dollars a year when all this thing is done, said and done, you're gonna get accumulation of money, and if you, if the people are wise, which as they should be in an association, to be able to handle those problems with that road themselves. It's not like there's no money there for that to happen and these people are screwed. There is money there, and that's what the association's all about. This year, they had no snow removal. Last year, I think they spent three thousand in snow removal. And currently, with forty-four lots, they're, they're bringing down about eighteen thousand dollars a year. So, my point is, that's the reason why an association is established, for the purpose of that. And that's the reason why when we first developed this whole development and had this vision, I mean, that's what it was. Said it was a division for the town of Seward. And to go farther, you know, this area out here, if that ever happens, I mean, there's a lot of possibilities there, you know? And it may not be us, right?
It might not be us.
Rick might pass away.
Yeah, he might have a heart attack.
One other question I have for you kind of, but mostly for John, okay, so, John, since we couldn't really decide upon who, who owns Goldenrod, we think the associa- association owns it, right? They should?
We don't own it. Sid, and if you look at-
You'll say, okay, so the city doesn't, but it says zero.
You see that zero right there?
Yeah, but you look at, look at-
None of that's ours.
Look at Ridge Run to the left, zoom in, and another number will pull up, and it will say the association. Those, yeah, the other way. So, go to the left, past Bob and Gay Martin's, and there will be a number. Nope. You gotta go left.
Left.
Yeah, well, look to the left.
Okay.
Drag to the right. Click and drag to the right, not to the left.
You're the right. I don't know which way I'm going.
Go toward Doc Cruzy's house.
Oh, here we go.
Yeah, so, keep going a bit there, and they'll see that number there in the road to the left of the, the roundabout, R three there?
Yeah, residential?
Yeah, but click on that number right there, okay? That one will say the association, Ridge Run Homeowner Association.
That's who owns it.
Right, but when you click on the other ones, it says zero, nobody owns it. My big concern is here, or question, I don't live there, it's not a concern, if you click on zero, it's zero.
Well, that shouldn't be.
Nobody owns it. So, my question is, if nobody owns it, okay, the city does own it, but if the homeowners own it,
Homeowners do.
Then they should be listed as owning it.
Yep.
Then they are the ones, in theory, who are in authority to allow access to the new development. What's gonna happen with that?
Well, we, they're public access. Private drive-
It's a private drive.
It's a private drive for maintenance, it's public access. That's what it says on here.
But, the thing, the only question I-
I'm not hereby dedicated.
I don't wanna, I just have questions. John, the only question I have is, someone from Web was quoted as saying, well, it's a private drive, you can put a gate up, a gate up at any time you want. If you have a gated community, is it public access?
I don't see the gates.
No, but if it was, someone from Web was quoted as saying, this could be a gated community, I'm talking Goldenrod.
Okay.
If it's gated, is it public access? In general?
It can be, it has to be both.
But it has to be agreed upon by the people that own the gate, right?
Right, so, it would be semi-public, semi-private, depending on what hours of the day you had the gates. Yeah, you still have to have access to the-
We had a, we had a meeting with the association people last night, and their concern was, is while we're constructing this road, since we're bringing in big trucks and everything, um, what happens if road gets damaged while we're doing it? And we made an agreement last night that we would repair road that got destroyed as we were going in. But, you know, it's, I, I get a little bit, all of the rhetoric about all of this and all of this, it's fine as people are building their houses to bring in all the heavy equipment to build their houses, but when something else wants to proceed further, it becomes an issue. We are very willing, as developers, to take responsibility for something that is damaged during the construction of this next development. And that's something that we had anticipated from the very get-go. However, I didn't hear anybody in the association complaining when their house was being built, when heavy trucks were driving on that street to build their houses. So, I, I get a little bit, you know, not, well, but I'm not gonna go farther with that one.
Thank you.
Jonathan?
That's not entirely true though, because we've taken a portion of the street out to replace it for water lines and still-
We, we were planning on doing that at this time, that was one of those unfortunate things of the sewer line coming through there. And we, had you been at the meeting last night?
I was not told of the meeting, so I didn't know.
I-
Yeah, that's gonna be taken care of by us, that has nothing to do with, you guys don't have to worry about that at all. That's something, we were waiting for this, and we knew it was coming.
And, and we wanted it to pack down tight as well, so-
Better settlement.
Well, the concern is that with all the traffic that's gonna go through there to those houses, yes, you're right. Everyone that builds a house out there, you know, is gonna do the same thing. But when I'm building a house, I also am paying homeowners association fees, so, I am paying for it.
And they are paying for it as well too, because as soon as you buy that lot, you are getting pro-rated for that homeowners association, but they weren't.
So, it's not like I'm getting away with it for free.
Well, I'm not saying anybody's getting away with anything.
But you're upset that we're taking these heavy trucks on there, but you're misled, you're not, it's not, it's not entirely true, 'cause we are paying for it.
Well, you can't build a house without bringing in a heavy truck.
You're exactly right.
You gotta bring in a cement truck, you gotta bring in a truck that has forms on it for the, the foundation walls, you gotta bring in a lumber truck. And you have to bring in your garbage trucks too, right? So, all those trucks are running on the same eight inches of asphalt that you're running out on the highway.
Which is a state standard, by the way.
That's what we're using.